And we're ready whenever you are.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the city council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the right, in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America under the principle of liberty and justice.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dillabah.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Rees.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley.
Counselor Scamperley asked to be excused tonight because he's out of town. Is there a consensus of council to excuse?
Yes.
Yes.
Quorum present.
We have one presentation tonight from the Augsburg Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, I'm Craig Chevalier. I am the Vice President of the Greater Augsburg Chamber of Commerce. I'm here tonight to give you an update on some exciting things that are happening with our chamber. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce the two other people that are here with me tonight. Ben Dixon is the Executive Director of the St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce, and I believe you all know Laura Pearson, the Executive Director of the Augsburg Chamber. Our Chamber Board has been working hard to find ways to bring the biggest impact to our membership and to the city. We've been in discussions with City Manager Steve Jelly and City Planner Andrea Smith to potentially move the chamber offices to the Dubisky Center. We're close to a draft agreement for city council consideration, and that will be acted on in the coming weeks. Moving the chamber offices to the Dubisky Center makes sense as the focal point of tourism to the city is the river and the visitor center. We envision that tourists coming off the river will be greeted by Laura, who will have, or who will be able to highlight events, places of interest, and local eateries. This makes sense to our board, and we are collectively excited for this potential move. As you know, our chamber has been in discussions with other chambers throughout the county on an integration project. We've made significant progress in this, and Ben Dixon will give you all an update. Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, City Manager Jelly, thank you for having me here this evening to give the update on the integration process that we've been undertaking. As Craig mentioned, I'm Ben Dixon. I'm the relatively new Executive Director of the St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the job about four months now, but that said, that said, I'm no stranger to the chamber. I was on the Chamber Board of Directors for 15 years, and I've been doing economic development work in the area for that same amount of time, which means I've known John quite a while. So anyway, thank you for having me here. You know, given that background, I was able to jump right into the chamber director role and hit the ground running. And interesting time to become the Chamber Director with the possible merger of several of the local community chambers in with our, the Greater St. Lawrence County Chamber Partnership. We started exploring this concept in late 2018, looking at various integration models and shared services models. We had several benefits and goals, and being the drivers behind the concept, to combine the chambers to form one organization to serve the county, its business community, and individual communities in an efficient structure. Efficiency was at the core. Share staffing, administrative functions, and support for community-wide event planning, and regional strategies for marketing and economic development. We gain organizational efficiencies and lower costs, have a collective voice for businesses, greater impact at all levels of government, and focus on economic vitality initiatives to benefit all towns, all the towns in the county. There was always intention for an integrated model to provide greater benefit and strength to the local communities such that they don't lose their local identity or presence, and rather see an increase in the chambers that they could have. Before continuing, I'd like to share how the merger shaped out to achieve that goal from the Augsburg, how to achieve that from the Augsburg perspective. So first off, Laura Pearson will stay on the ground here in Augsburg. Sure, her physical presence will still be here. And then she won't have to do so much back office and administrative work because that would be centralized with the St. Lawrence County Chamber. She'll have more bandwidth to work on the actual programming, things like event planning and delivery, marketing and promotion, member services, all that good stuff that she really likes. So I think Laura's excited about this potential because all that administrative work, you know, the financials and reporting and compliance and insurance and all that stuff just takes up so much time. This way, we can get more efficient, and Laura will have more bandwidth to represent the city. The new Greater St. Lawrence County Chamber Partnership will have equal representation from each community with two board members from each. We, our board will reshape itself so that we have equal representation. And the current representation of the Augsburg Chamber Board and staff will serve as an advisory committee to the Greater St. Lawrence County Partnership. There will be dedicated accounts to be held in the new chamber so that any funding that is provided to support a particular community will stay in that account and be restricted monies to be spent benefiting the local community. So, um, how, what our history of building this has looked like. First, after conceiving the idea, some grants were sought to do a feasibility study, and we received a couple of grants to do that, so we contracted the Height Performance Group to do a feasibility study. That was executed. We then presented the feasibility study results to the local chambers, who all formed three each, three representatives from each chamber came together to form an advisory committee to move forward with investigating this. And so that advisory committee developed the key aspects of an integrated model that they thought would be a good fit, including things like legal structures and financial structures, financial scenarios, staffing scenarios, all that kind of stuff. We have engaged the New York Council of Nonprofits attorneys to help us out with the legal steps that will be necessary to perform this merger. And the advisory committee will be going out and presenting to the local chamber boards again. And we have, we have executed due diligence on the Augsburg Chamber to make sure that the merger will not cause any problems, and that report came back very clean, everything in good shape. So really, the next step is simply to engage with the Nikon attorneys in putting together formal resolutions that can be adopted by the St. Lawrence County Chamber Board of Directors and the Augsburg Chamber Board of Directors. City Manager Jelly suggested you may want to know a bit about our revenue sources. Being a Chamber of Commerce, they're kind of varied. It mostly relies upon membership, municipal support, events, income, grants, and we have a robust health insurance program, which also brings in quite a bit of revenue. And of course, any pro, smaller programmatic revenues that we can achieve.
You have bed tax, too, right?
Yeah, and the bed tax.
That would be significant, right?
It is, yes, it's quite significant. We receive a portion of the bed tax income, so. Yes, and we get funding from the county legislature as well to promote tourism. We are the tourism promotion agency for the county, so.
Again, I love New York money.
Yep, I love New York money, matches with county legislature funds, so. So that's kind of what our finances, our revenues are based upon. And staff-wise, currently at the county chamber, we have four of us working now. Brooke Rouse, who was the Executive Director, is now the Director of Tourism. I'm now on board. We have an office manager and bookkeeper named Regina Haswell, who is with us, and Suzanne Cassidy, who is our chamber, our insurance agent and membership director. And she unfortunately is retiring in June after 20 years on the job, so. You know, as we go through the merger, we'll have the opportunity to bring additional staff on. We also have three interns working with us this summer, so that's good. So that's kind of what our executive staff looks like at the county chamber, if you're not familiar with it. So, you know, I figure after all the mergers go through, we'll be able to bring on, you know, two or more people to shore up the staff and be on the boots on the ground and running all the programming, so. That's, unless you have any questions, that's kind of the, kind of the scoop.
Yeah, very. The obvious question is, like, right now, we provide municipal support for the chamber. I don't know, under this new thing, how that would work. And you said local funds stay local, yeah, how's all that?
Yeah, basically, what we would do, since we would be legally merging the two chambers, you know, we would love to continue to have your support, of course, to be able to have Laura on board and doing good things for the city and promoting the city. Basically, in, it would just change the, you know, the check would be coming to the Greater St. Lawrence County Chamber Partnership, which would be the new entity, and we would put it into a restricted account. So that's pretty much how that would work. Craig, do you have any, you want to jump back in?
Our board is fully supportive of this integration, and we're excited to stay active in the city of Augsburg. We'll be able to offer greater benefits to our members. We'll have a larger team working for the benefit of Augsburg. We'll maintain an office right here in the city. We'll have equal representation on the integrated chamber board, and we'll maintain an ambassador committee right here in the city to offer guidance to our businesses and to the integrated chamber. They're exciting times happening right now for our chamber, and we're looking forward to being able to bring more benefits to the city of Augsburg, and we hope you share in that excitement.
I do. I think this is going to be very good, you know. I'm hoping you can help us. You know, it'd be nice if, you know, we could get eight, 10 great events going in Augsburg, you know. Help us find bands, you know, different activities.
I worked first hand with Laura, and we were organizing that first bass fishing tournament, and Laura and I had several different committees formed, and we had bands lined up. We had activities, we had family carnivals planned. I mean, so if Laura's at the helm leading Augsburg, I mean, she knows the right person, or the right people to contact to get us rolling, and Laura knows I'm just a phone call away to start getting some stuff rolling, so. As long as we have Laura here, we're going to be in great shape.
Great, we agree. All right.
So, well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, yeah. That we are having, I think I sent an invitation to all of you, but we are hosting a nature and networking event. We're starting to, you know, I'm on the St. Lawrence County reopening task force, and we're starting to get, rolling back into in-person networking events, and we're going to be having one at Hosmer's Marina tomorrow at 4:30, so, in their outdoor pavilion space. So if you can make it, we'd love to have you there.
Sounds great. John owes me a few beers, so. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, see you later.
We do not have any public hearings tonight, so this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone that would like to speak from the podium at five minutes?
Just a couple of things. Two meetings ago, I, I asked a question, and still, of course, I brought up the thing about town hall meetings. Have you thought anything about that with the taxpayers?
I haven't done it.
You haven't done anything yet? It will, let me, you know, is there anything going to be done that way?
I like the idea, you know, I started to do a question and answer, but then COVID had.
Okay.
I'd love to get back into that, just.
Well, COVID's, yeah.
A little bit on my plate right now.
All right, COVID's, you know, we're coming on a downswing.
Sure.
And as I said, I think there's a lot of taxpayers that would like to be able to ask. We can't ask questions here and get answers.
No, that's true.
But I think it would be very good that we could sit down and get answers from each and every one of you guys. Okay? Uh, the other thing I'd just like to bring up, I filed a couple of things under the foil, and I know a lot of other people have, and it was a 45-day before we get it. And I guess my other question is, is WWNY foils something, and they got it immediately for the news. Could somebody, is it different from what a taxpayer foils in a news station? You know, I'm just, no, I think.
Apparently it is, I don't know, I don't want that, I don't want that.
But you're, you're the mayor, you know what's going on.
It's the first you brought it to me.
I know it's the first I brought it to you, it brought, first I brought it to anybody. I'm just asking a simple question. How can a news station get it the next day, and a taxpayer has to wait 45 days? I know, we, we don't know, we don't know. It's a simple question, and it should be a pretty simple answer. But once again, we, there again, okay, maybe the taxpayers would like to know that. And one other thing is, is, you know, the beach is great, comprehensive development plan's great, tax cuts great, but, you know, I look at, I'm not a common core math guy, but my taxes supposedly went down 10%. My water and sewer went up six, so really, that's, six from 10 is four in my book, in the old book. So mine only went up 4%, I don't know about the rest of people. I got this interesting thing today from a friend of mine who lives in Syracuse. He told me it was in the, in the Syracuse paper this weekend. And as he sent it to me, and I read it, I'm saying, whoa. And it's about ineffective leaders. And it says, information dis symmetry. People hoard information and don't allow everyone to operate with all the facts. I think that happens here. People that think that they're looting, but they're actually manipulating. I think that happens here. I think we have individuals building those small empires that are tearing this community apart. The ones fighting over a slice of the pie as opposed to building more pie shops. Leaders who are afraid of competition. Taxpayers are your leaders' competition, and they don't like it. Finally, ineffective leaders think their people work for them, and that's a privilege for their people to work for them. But let me tell you something. Effective leaders understand that they work for their people. They're, they're really at the service of the people that they work for. That is the key to being an effective leader. And if we don't start being elected effective leaders in this community, you people make a ton of, a ton of accusations against past counselors, past mayors, okay? But you're going to go down in history, okay, as one of the worst administrations, okay, if you don't start being effective leaders. So people are going to come after you in the next four years, and believe me, it's coming, okay? They're going to say that about you guys. Step up, as I told you before, step up, let your egos go away, bury the hatchets with people, and start being a little consistent, respect, and appreciation. You guys want that, we want that. It's a two-way street, it's not one-way street. So let's see what you can do. You said that before. You sat right there at that table and said that before, okay? And you told me you don't lie. So if you don't lie, I think one of the biggest things you should do, Mayor, is follow that right there. Start, start making this a two-way street, and start working with the people in this community.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, my name's Amy Anderson, taxpayer of city of Augsburg. I just would like to know if Mr. Jelly could move to the table where he could face the people as a running our money. I think the taxpayers deserve to look him in the eye and vice versa. He should be looking us in the eye. Just a suggestion, every, I know COVID changed, but every other city manager sat there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
This brings us to correspondence. Do we have any?
We have one. If I were mayor, city manager, fire chief, I would take every opportunity after a call to action to thank the folks who do so much to keep Augsburg safe and sound. Margaret Haggerty.
We, next we have our consent agenda, that the claim is enumerated. General Fund Warrant number 10-2021, the amount of $717,805.9 and Library Warrant number 1021, the amount of $8,219.16 and Capital Fund Warrant number 10-2021, the amount of $991,535.4 and Community Development Fund Warrant number 10-2021, zero dollars, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant number 10-2021, the amount of zero dollars, as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Is that it? Yeah, a second. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Rees.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, and this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jelly.
A resolution supportive Assembly Bill A 7064 that would authorize the city of Augsburg to adopt a local law ordinance a resolution to collect, to collect an additional 1% sales tax. So this.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Two. Move it?
Yes. I'll second.
And so this is an updated resolution to the one you already passed. The Assembly requested that the resolution from council be dated after the date on their resolution. So our, our resolution would have gone ahead of theirs. So this is ultimately correcting that and sending it back to the Assembly.
Have we, have we got a same as in the Senate?
We do.
Who's carrying that? Senator Ritchie?
Correct, yes, sir.
Do, we've already passed that resolution in form?
Excuse me, yes, so this, this will companion to that council. The Senate didn't, the Senate didn't flag the, the date, the Assembly office is the only, only one that flagged it, so.
But in order for a bill to go through, they have to be same as.
Correct.
So the language in the, in the bills have not effectively been changed?
Not until they get this.
So will the modifications be done with the Senate?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I get.
Yeah.
Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dillabah.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Rees.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A resolution to approve the sale of surplus property at 424 Grant Street following the public auction of May 4th, 2021.
I'll, I'll second that. Do you, do you want to read it? Would you care to? You think it would help? Well.
I think he calls for a summary statement unless it's requested by a counselor. If there's any reason why it shouldn't be.
Would you like it read?
Well, the public will understand a lot better without having a resolution from them.
Resolution to approve the sale of surplus city-owned property. Whereas the city of Augsburg has acquired the following parcel in accordance with property tax sale foreclosure proceedings, and whereas city staff has reviewed the parcel and find no conflict with the proposed sale, having no infrastructure or known easements of public benefit. And whereas said parcel has been declared surplus by the city council on April 12th, 2021, and included in the surplus auction on May 4th, 2021, where no bids were received. And whereas all property sold by the city of Augsburg is as is and where is by quick claim deed, the city makes no warranty as to clear title or condition. And whereas all property within the city of Augsburg is subject to the provisions and enforcement of Chapter 97, Section 13, Property Maintenance. And whereas the sale of surplus property promotes the return of underutilized property to the taxable rule for the greater public benefit and keeping with comprehensive planning goals. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approves the following sale. Tax map number 48.072-6-9, location 424 Grant Street. This is a non-conforming parcel in the city's single-family residential zoning district being 50 feet by 100 feet. The minimum price established by council was $500. The sale price offered was $500 by Robert E. Page. Be it further resolved, said listed buyer is financially responsible for all applicable St. Lawrence County filing fees, and be it further resolved that the sale of city-owned real property shall be subject to the review and approval of the city attorney.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So in a nutshell, we went out to bid, didn't get any bids, and then someone approached us and offered us $500.
Correct.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Dillabah.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Rees.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jelly.
A resolution to establish an additional official newspaper for the publication of local law notices and other matters required by law to be published by the city of Augsburg for 2021. Be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby designates the following newspaper as an, as an additional official newspaper for the publication of local law and other matters required by law to be published by the city of Augsburg for the remainder of 2021. The Augsburg Journal. I'll move it.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
So is it the journal or the Augsburg Journal?
I believe it's the journal.
The journal?
Well.
It's commonly known, I believe, as the Augsburg Journal.
I guess we should have the official name. Oh, is the journal? Well, we should find out what the official name is, and, and. Just the journal.
The journal. Yeah.
It also kind of reads like we're required by law to publish in this paper the way the resolution's written. I mean, that's the way it could be interpreted, and we have three official newspapers. Usually, we do official newspaper designations also at, at the organizational meeting. Do we have any idea of the circulation, or when it's going into print? It just seems a little, seems a little early, and like we make the other papers wait until our organizational meeting, and we designate it for the year. This seems kind of out of.
I, I mean, I mentioned it last meeting, just based on the premise that I know a lot of people are, have purchased subscriptions. I believe it starts some this.
June or.
Yeah, so I believe that a lot of people are actually purchasing the papers, so it'll be one of the only papers. I know a lot of people have delivered to their house, and it's local and in print, so I think that maybe we could reach more local people too by providing in that because people actually have it in their hands rather than reading it online or things like that, so. Just another avenue, and the price for the paper was, was really, was really cheap, the introductory rate, so I know a lot of people jumped on it as well.
How many days a week will it be?
Every Thursday, I believe it was.
So one day a week?
Mm-hmm.
I just don't know what a lot is, and if we're obligated, let's say, let's say it's like, I don't know how many subscriptions they have. And if we're, I mean, there's expenditure. And if we're, I mean, there's expenditures involved, right? I mean, we have two now. I don't, how do you handle that now? Do you, do you pick one or the other, or do you put it in both?
All three.
So we would have to put it in all three?
Well, whatever we designate. We didn't do the, weren't able to do North Country Now yet, right?
We are unable to yet. They are finalizing.
The Watertown and the Journal are owned by the same company, correct?
Yep, yes, but going to be run as, as separate, separate entities.
So we'll pay three different peoples for the same thing?
At the moment, we just have The Times. The North Country Now is not there yet, but we, we approve them for when they do, to do get there. So we would, we would effectively have three entities once they both get up and running. I think you'd have two with this one, and then when North Country Now came up, you, you'd effectively have three.
Yeah, that just seems like, seems like there ought to be some decision-making in terms of, you know, which one has the most coverage, what do we get our biggest bang for the buck? I mean, if, you know, one has 2,000, but one has 10,000 and much broader, you know what I mean? Legal, legal ads and employment ads, and those would add up. I don't know what our budget is for that for a year, but... Well, I think it would serve a better public note from a public notice aspect to be able to reach within the confines of the city residents, you know, to have your local and support your local city newspaper, just by simple business transactions or what the case may be. Nothing says that we can't undo what we've done once already to support a local endeavor within our community, whether it be advertising or public notice or whatever the case may be. I don't, I don't... But if you can, if you can, you know, let's say the ad's $1,000. I mean, if we could spend $1,000 instead of $3,000 every time, I mean, that could add up significantly. Like, and you can get us, you can get a subscription to North Country Now, so, I mean, I consider them kind of local as well. There's local people that live here. I think the Watertown has its benefits if you're trying to reach a bigger audience.
So keep in mind the one, the one-day-a-week papers, a lot of times it wouldn't be able to meet the deadline, so we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't use them for that because it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the purpose. A lot of times we'd just be using Times.
But if you're, if you're planning a legal ad or an ordinance, I mean, a week or days isn't a long period of time.
Right. A lot of time... I think in those cases, we are ensuring that we're, we're reaching the, the intended audiences. I mean, employment advertisements, we're advertising for our benefit, who we want to reach. So whether we use one or three, or which one we use, depending on what we're trying to reach, those would be optional. But the legal notices, I don't know. I mean, I think our intent is to, to reach as many people and make notification as we can. I mean, we can, we can roll some numbers together to give you the average of how many times a year we do that and what the, what the cost may look like. It was brought up by council last meeting, and same time we had a request from them, so I brought it forward. So if that's, just let me know what you want us to do if we can, if you want us to do...
So I think the county, do they, do they do it on a rotating basis so you don't show any favoritism and, and how they do it, but, but they save money by doing it that way?
Yeah, I don't know.
Look at, so...
I just think with the amount of money that we spend on lawyers and we spend on everything else that supporting a new local newspaper is...
I'm all in favor, I'm all in favor of supporting it. I just, I'm just questioning how we're going about handling three different publications.
Right now, we're only publishing one, so we're not even publishing in the second one right now.
Right, and, and the other one, from what I understand, it could be any day.
I mean, I think they're working as quickly as they can to get it approved. Again, we can, we can put together what, what cost projections would look like. I think to Councillor Kennedy's point, certainly this is now a local venue that we're hoping a lot of people are buying the subscription, supporting the business, so I think there's some benefit to doing certain things in there, but...
Yeah, let's, let's revisit it, you know, at the January meetings and have an understanding, better understanding of all those different things. Well, we have a resolution that's on the floor for discussion and vote. Yeah, if it passes and we didn't say, let's revisit it and do our homework and, you know, figure out how much we're spending and could we do it more efficiently with taxpayer dollars and, you know, support everybody. How much do we, on legal notices, on, on just the...
It actually comes out of central services, so I don't...
I don't know. I mean, looking at tens or...
Fifteen, maybe.
Fifteen times.
I think fifteen.
Do you have an opinion, though? You're quite...
Going for another six months, so let's do it. Just, just for 21.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a great trial run.
It's a local newspaper, let's do it.
We can always review the costs.
Yeah.
What, what, outside of that, what's the hang-up with North Country Now and the resolution we passed in January?
Just, just their process, getting, getting their, their systems into circulation so it meets compliance with the law for it. Cap has to do with their, the number of times they print, correct?
Yes, and there's also a license that they're in the process of obtaining.
I'm sorry?
Their process of taking the proper license to do it, nothing to do with us or just...
They're a weekly newspaper as well, right?
Has there ever been multiple?
Yep. Yeah.
We paid everybody?
No, but do we pay each one of those people every time something put in?
May I answer?
That's my point. So it would be 3,000 instead of just one?
Councillor Fisher, if I may. In, in the past, it's, it's based on the publication requirements. It's based on whenever a meeting was held or a special meeting was held and what was passed at that meeting and what the publication requirements were. So it was a matter of if we could make one paper, then we could do it, whereas a weekly publication, we might not be able to. Sundays clearly are more expensive because there's a higher circulation. So it was, those were some of the reasons that were used in the past when we had more than one. The problem you run into is when you only have one official newspaper designated and you hold a special meeting and you can't meet the publication deadline, it pushes everything out longer. So that's why it's always been a suggestion to have more than one, but unfortunately, recently, when the Journal closed here in Augsburg, we only had the Watertown, and which is why North Country started moving forward with the process they needed to complete to be able to be an official newspaper. And now that the Journal is back, then that request was made.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Shane Brown.
Resolution authorizing the City Manager execute change order number three to the contract for the Lafayette Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Contract with Lupini Construction Incorporated. Whereas the City of, Council authorizes the City Manager to enter into a contract with Lupini Construction Incorporated for the Lafayette Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project for a total contract sum including contingency not to exceed $275,573. Bill number 662020. And whereas New York State Department of Transportation has provided the city capital projects funds through the multimodal four program to address repairs and maintenance needs to the structure up to $375,000. And whereas increased concrete repair is needed and adequately address damages to the bridge and exceed for, exceeding of the grant funds. Now therefore it be resolved that the City Manager is hereby authorized to execute change order number three at the project cost increase of $244,0368 to the existing contract between the City of Augsburg and Lupini Construction Incorporated for a total contract sum not to exceed $519,941. And be it further resolved, the additional, that the additional $197,000 in city contribution to pay for this work shall be driven from capital construction A 5510.330.
I'll, I'll make a motion for this. I'll introduce it.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is this, like, just a, a couple of the arches or all?
Yeah, but just standing one and two that are over land.
I, I was down there today and looked at it, so it's good, it's nice to see it get restored and, yeah, the two arches will be, you know, it'll be nice. That's what, you know, people mostly see, but those other three need a lot of work.
Do we have a clerk of the works or a construction supervisor looking out for us?
Oh, yeah, Tisdale's Associates.
It, it looks like a better quality work than probably in the past.
So did we do a contract increase already? Because the numbers, the, the numbers don't add up on, on some of these things, like the resolution doesn't necessarily correspond with the...
Right, so what we're doing, the difference in the money is, so we had a grant, so we have a little bit of the grant funding left that'll get used, and then we'll use the 197 as the additional authorization that'll come out of our CHIPS funding for the, for the year.
The grant was 310,000, the bid was 275,000, so there was some money left there in the grant, then not...
Yeah, they started the project last year. I think they got some pay-ups out of that. They continue to work this year, too.
So far, really, the city hasn't invested anything from our, our own money. So we have two arches down, three...
So this, this change order is 244, 368. The original, the original amount was 275, and somehow we got to 315. So I didn't, I didn't know if that was another change order that was previously approved or...
The, the reason the numbers aren't adding up is because this is specifically a change order to address the contract with Lupini Construction and does not address any of the funding for the engineering, which is Tisdale, which Shane just mentioned.
So the original contract price, you're saying that the extra, it's like 35,000 is all engineering?
Yes.
Okay. So there's still about a million to go?
Probably more.
I think, but speaking with them, the condition of the first two arches, that million has gone up significantly for the rest of it.
Yeah.
Maybe double to triple.
Yeah, because you're looking at, um, about 250, 300,000 dollars per arch over land, now we're all going over water. It's gonna be a lot more, probably a million and a half to two million.
So could we say that in the resolution, the project cost increase of 244, could we actually state what the increase is for the total project?
No.
No, the resolution, the resolution is written the way that it's supposed to be written because this is specifically to address the contract that the city has with Lupini Construction. We have a separate contract with Tisdale, and so we have to keep the cost separately. So the resolution that has been provided to you is written correctly.
Okay, so...
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Director of Public Works, Shane Brown.
A resolution declaring surplus property and authorizing the City Manager to hold a public auction. Whereas staff has reviewed the following property and recommended that it, the sale, City Council declare all items as surplus city-owned property fit for public sale at the recommend minimum sale price shown below. 1993 International Dump Truck, $200. 1996 International Dump Truck, $200. 1999 International Dump Truck at $200. A 2,000 Chevy K3500 four-by-four for $500. Another 2,000 Chevy K3500 four-by-four for $500. A 2,001 Dodge, one ton, four-by-four, $2,000. A 2,011 Ford, Ford van for 200. A 1984 Chevy Step Van for $200. A 2,008 Ford F-250 for $500. A 2,008 F-350 Dump Truck four-by-four for $500. A 2,002 X John Deere Lawn Mower Deck and Deck for $200. A 2,014 Ford Explorer for 200. A 2,017 Ford Explorer for 200. A 2,000 Chevy K3500 four-by-four for $2,000. A 1996 Ford F-800 Pumper for $2,000. A 2,005 Chevy 1500 for $500. A 2,011 Crown Vic for $200. Four old traffic lights for $10. A 72-inch PTO-driven tow behind mower deck for $10. A metal grit dumpster for $25. A knack box for $10. Small truck toolbox for $10. Small weather guard toolbox for $10. An in-bed weather guard toolbox for $10. Old wooden cart and hand dolly $10. An older canoe for $10. One bicycle lot $10. Second bicycle lot $10.
No, has there been a motion? Um, no, I'll make a motion. I have a second.
Yes.
Discussion?
This is pretty well clear out the dump area, the...
Yeah. Good, good cleanup. Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Reisch?
Yes.
Mayor Scully?
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to all business, and we will begin with City Manager Stephen Jelly.
Our council, provide an update on the comprehensive plan. Had some lengthy discussion with Councillor Reisch about this. What I'm just asking for a little more patience from council, just to let me do a little more community engagement on this. I'd like to be able to speak, you know, personally to some of the key stakeholders in the community. I think it's just a, just good courtesy for me to go sit down, you know, one-on-one and find out, quite frankly, is there anything else that we need to, to put in that, that plan? So we'll be doing that, and then Andrew will be engaging with her counterparts at the county office to move it through a comment period with them. I think, again, it'll avoid any criticism or comment on the back end if, if we get in there and, and get some, some comments. So I, I hope to take, you know, no more than the next 30 days to get this back to you in a, in a final draft form, and sooner than that, if, if we can get, get all this done and back. I think we've got a good product. We've really, we did receive very few comments from the public, which I think was, was a good thing. But because of the magnitude of this and the, you know, what we expect from this document, I just think it's, it'll be good for me specifically to get some, some input from some of our key CEOs in the community.
To request that once we get like the final document, can we do another public discussion before we adopt it? That's something we could do, just so that we, once we get the formal document, the suggestions that were made and changes that were made, go out to the public for review and then last, last chance comments. That's something we could do.
Sure. So I think one of our, one of the other things we're going to do, councillors, is we, we're going to make sure the current plan is up and our rebroadcast, we'll ask all the media outlets to give us another bump with that, so people are looking at it. And again, I think the final process will be up to council, but, but certainly it may be, you know, appropriate for a, another, you know, official public hearing once, once you're, once you all have approved, you know, a final draft of the document. Yeah, I, I don't see a lot of significant changes coming from this. I do want to spend a little bit of time with, with the staff, just coursing through it to make sure that we've got everything that we think's important. One of the comments we did get back, I think, was, you know, what is our action plan going forward? And, you know, my response to that right now is we're creating the strategic vision with this plan, and maybe the first year our action plan will be contained in, you know, next year's budget as we look at the capital improvement plan, we look at the community development plan, and we make sure that we included, you know, the actions in the budget going forward. The, the budget document should be something a little more than just the financial roadmap for the, for the fiscal year, should be the action plan for that. So I think to, to satisfy that. There's a lot of things, you know, in the planning process that are, that are good, they're appropriate, and they keep us moving. So I think, you know, taking just a little more time for this, this base, we'll get that right and set the stage for it. Again, I think all the comments we've received, you know, everything has been, been relatively been positive, so I'd like to just keep that going, and I'll, I'll be back, back soon with that, the draft.
If you're able to, uh. Get it to the county planning office, I mean, do the referral this week by Thursday, then it can be on the agenda. I, I don't, I don't see, I, I mean. You know, I don't see why. These things weren't brought up before. Um, so. And I, I understand now that there's also a potential seeker review. I don't know if it's a. Generic environmental impact statement or how that process works, but. The importance of this and why it was presented, uh, back in early March is that each year the state holds a competition for grants. And. This year's round is now open and there's seven hundred and fifty million dollars in grant funding available statewide. And I, I'd like us to be ambitious about that. And, and when you're writing grants, um, the best thing you can do is to cite that. This is part of an adopted community development plan. So since their due July thirtieth, uh. That doesn't leave a lot of time. So it would have been nicer to have taken care of some of this earlier, and I hope that we can get it adopted with all approvals, whether it's the seeker, the county review. And our approvals in the final public hearing, if that's what we're going to do. So if we are writing grants, uh, or whomever's writing grants can cite it as being an adopted community development plan.
Concur.
Well, prior, prior to this community development plan, which. You know, it's a good plan and it's, it's, you know, appreciate the effort put forward here, but we do have an adopted plan that we've used, correct me if I'm wrong. That we've used to apply for these competition grants, uh, through our LWRP, which is a very comprehensive. Community plan that encompasses the entire city, uh, which would be ready to go until we can tweak this and, and, and get it ready for model.
That deals mostly with the waterfront and it's not.
It encompasses the whole city. It's in the language.
It's not a, it's not the comprehensive plan. They're, they're two different documents.
Years ago, prior to.
The last one that we did adopt was in the seventies and it's about five or six pages long. So this, this really needs to be done and we need to get going on it.
I disagree.
Does anyone else have any, uh, old business? And this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business? And this brings us.
Well, yeah, sorry. Just a couple of things here with the presentation earlier tonight, uh, regarding the community center. What, what room are we looking to, to, uh, facilitate this, this office?
Would have been the offices that we, uh, currently have the director and his, uh, assistant right when you walk in there, the, the office area.
Where would the new director go?
City Hall.
Here?
Yep.
Okay. I was kind of thinking maybe the other way around, but, um, all right. So that answers that. As far as transient slips and anything, um, related to the. The, uh, the docks down there, from what I understand from some boaters, we don't have any transient slips down there currently operating. I mean, we, we can't have people. Into the city. We do have them? How many do we have? Okay. All right. Thank you. And as far as, um.
Counselor, if I could just, but we, we received calls about that. The, the problem is they get taken up quickly. So people show up early. They think that it's somebody who's rounded up permanently, but it's just somebody who got there before them.
Are they noted like transient on the slip?
I don't believe so.
Yeah. I don't say that. They used to be four. And then I just had a couple of calls about jet ski slips. Is that something we're going to entertain after the marina's full for extra revenue or no? No, last year we did. Um, I didn't know if that was something that was going to be looked at this year. I know last year we did it after the marina was full to fill like gaps next to pontoons for a couple extra hundred bucks a pop is. I mean. They filled up quick last year.
Yeah, I, I think we'll look at it again. It was a good idea last year. If we can accommodate some people, sure.
We, we have a timeframe as to when the community center will be open.
Excuse me, we, we've, we've had it open, you know, recently for people to use. It's getting, it's getting used fairly routinely now.
So it's open for.
Abounds. You can rent it now.
Now, a couple of the questions. Is it open during the day for like restroom usage? Like, cause I've had, um, a couple of people complain that they were not at Kids Kingdom and there was no access to restrooms down there for the kids. Um, is that something that we could look into making sure at least it's open?
Yeah, it's, it's our plan to use the, you know, to open it like we did last year. So now the weather's getting good and it's being used. I'll make sure it's going on.
We're new business going to discussion.
I have new business.
Business too.
So as I mentioned, um, the Regional Economic Development Council. So we, each section of the state's divided up into different regions, and this changed several years ago. So there's the North Country region, which is essentially Watertown to Plattsburgh, and this is the way the state has set it up. In the past, you applied to different agencies throughout the year for whatever your needs were for grants, whether it was water, sewer, housing, whatever it could be. Now it's all consolidated, um, and there's one annual competition and that opened up last week. Did we have someone on the call? I hope. And. It's seven hundred and fifty million dollars statewide. And they need projects and we have projects and those are all outlined in the comprehensive development plan. Plus I'm sure there's plenty of other ideas out there as well. And so we can actually start applying now, but the, the deadline, as I mentioned, is July thirty one. So about sixty days, not much time. And I'd like to see us set a goal to, to submit at least ten applications this year. I mean, we have not, the North Country, uh, needs, needs to do better, but certainly Arginsburg needs to do better in terms of providing the Regional Economic Development Council. Viable projects and expressing what our need is, because this is where all the money comes. And it's our only opportunity to get it. So that, that, that would be my, my goal for staff as long as council concurs. And we only have sixty days to do it. And, um, you know, staff's busy with things. I'm prepared to allocate funds for the county IDA. Dank. The county planning office can write grants. Uh, it just needs to be organized. The projects need to be identified. The potential authors, and then there's gotta be staff time to explain these projects, but it covers. You know, infrastructure, uh, plans for downtown development, the psych center redevelopment. Housing, first time home buyers, uh, you name it, any source of funding, it's, it's out and it needs, these need to be written and in by July thirty first. So I, I mean, that's my, my goal.
Would, uh, would funding help?
So whether we do it at the next council meeting or you call for a special meeting, um, we will, we will provide a summary of what we think are the best opportunities, uh, that we think we can put in for. Uh, Counsel Rege is correct. There's a lot of money and a lot of grants in there. They're all, it's also very competitive and very time consuming and we need to be focused on, on what we really want. I'm not a, I, I, I don't. The number ten doesn't necessarily mean anything to me. If there's six or there's twenty, uh, whatever we identify to you that we should go after, um, I, I don't, I don't think there's any apprehension on our part to do that. I, I don't find, uh, at the moment, it's such an issue of us being able to write the grants. It's just, it's identifying what we have the most probability to succeed doing. We just participated, for instance, in a lengthy project for, uh, two twelve Ford Street to be demolished. Lengthy process, a lot involved. Most likely, we didn't make the first cut just based on the, on the criteria. So. It's my first CFA application period, so I'm, I'm reviewing the document thoroughly and our, our plan is to, to bring you what we think are the best, uh, opportunities that we see. I'll get that to you ahead of time before we meet. So if there's something you see that we didn't identify. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll go after it or tell you why we don't think that we can do it. Uh, included in that will be a recommendation from us, whether staff does it or we ask for support from somebody else and what those costs will be. The good thing about the consolidated process is it's consolidated, um, but there's a lot there to, to grasp. So. I, and I'm, one of the processes I'm just trying to make sure we don't do is I'm. What we don't have time and the reason the, the, um, application period on this is short is they're really not looking for you to, to back into projects. In other words, here's a grant, find a project. The whole idea of this is supposed to be, you have a project, it's on the shelf, it's designed. And now you're trying to match up a funding opportunity to it. And, and it is supported by your comprehensive development plans, it's supported by your budget, it's, you know, supported by all those things. You're looking for well, you know, well thought out, uh, plans. So. I, I don't, don't have any disagreement with Counsel Rege. I just, uh, again, we can, uh, we can schedule a special meeting and it might be a good idea to do that. So we can just spend some time on that topic. There is a lot to, uh, to, uh, to grasp.
Next Monday, where?
Doesn't matter to me. Whatever's good for you.
Next Monday's holiday, sir.
No, it's Memorial Day. This Friday, fast enough, or is that too fast or Tuesday?
If.
I mean, what, what, what do we have on the shelf right now? I mean, you know, going forward. I mean, you mentioned, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah. So for us.
A, a lot of this is, 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 you know, it's all worthy. Don't get me wrong. Every, every aspect of it.
No question.
But I mean, what do we have on the shelf right now that is viable, that is strong, that we might be able to get, to get moving quickly? I mean, maybe share that with us in a. Separate correspondence and, 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 and maybe have an update from Andrea or something of that nature and see what's really viable, where we've got.
We can send you that.
Good opportunity to get some.
We can send them before the week's over and it really is, you know, the things we talk about every day, this bridge we just got done talking about. It's, it's a million and a half, two million dollars. It could be three million dollars before it's over. It's a big project and gonna be expensive.
Bridges, bridges are perfect.
Yeah, yeah.
We just spent city money. Well, I guess most of it was chips, but generally chips money aren't used for that.
No, we got, we got lucky with it.
There's, there's a perfect example and it's only two arches out of however many times.
Five.
Five. So.
Waterfront cleanup, uh, for certain, finishing that. And then the demolition of these, these key structures, Ford Street, Main Street. So I mean, I think, you know, those are the, those are the big ones we talk about. But certainly the, the analysis of what's the best way to go with single family homeowner, uh, projects, you know, whether, whether we get the money, we, and we pass that off to, to somebody to execute for us. I mean, so again, there's just, I don't, there's no, no argument from staff. It's just a matter of us getting through all of it and, and determining was viable. I, I really wanna be able to say to council, here's what we think is viable to. I, you can apply for all these things. Um, I just, but I think we can, we can make a bit of an assessment on these, tell you what we've applied for before that we haven't been successful. And if our conditions haven't changed much, then I don't know. It's worth us putting the time in. So those are, those are just the types of things I, I wanna look at. Again, Ford Street, the grant we put in for was a big grant, a big opportunity, but when you looked at the number of grants that potentially were involved in the, in the, it was a, it was a nationwide grant opportunity for the number of projects. Ours at the end of the day was a building demolition. So I mean, it, it probably scored, you know, fairly low on the grand scheme of things. So. So I, we can set a date. I can give you the information, uh, by the end of the week, but we think, you know, maybe the summary, I would say, if we could schedule sometime mid to later part of next week to just have the discussion. Or if you just wanna do it in a workshop, if the entire council's not interested in having a meeting, we can just do a workshop with, you know, with, with a, like a committee of you. So power works best for you.
I, I'd entertain a special meeting. Whatever works best for everybody, Friday or Tuesday.
I have.
You get together with him, have a meeting.
What's that? Well, which, which days work? Friday and Tuesday don't work for either one of yous?
Or myself.
Wednesday.
Thursday?
No, no, actually all week. It's the end of the legislature session.
Well, not everybody. I mean, if you can't be here, you can't be here. But I mean.
I've got something between softball games next week. I have a game every week making up for rain days. So I'm straight out for the entire week.
How about this Thursday?
This Thursday, I have a game versus Herman DeKalb at five thirty here.
Seven hundred and fifty million dollars out there in the state.
I have twenty kids that depend on me.
I mean, you know, it only takes, we don't need everybody here to.
Right. I'm, I'm not saying you can't. I'm just saying that I am not available. I have a prior commitment and if it was, I always make sure that I'm available when we have our scheduled meetings, but when things pop up, I have other obligations as well.
Let's go with Tuesday at six and whoever can make it can make it. Just have it a workshop format right here.
Tuesday, the first of June?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's like sixty days. You had two months.
Steve, a- as you get into this and you, uh, decide you wanna, you know, uh, go after different grants, do we have some funding available that you could go to? Thank, you know, state authority and say, you know, help us with this or, and, and do, do you see anyone, um, having the manpower to? To, uh, to go around, right on writing a grant for us?
I, I think we have the funds for some assistance. Uh, yes, uh, I, but without knowing what the workload is gonna look like, what's the number of grants? I don't, I don't know what the total is, but. I think we'll, we'll be ready to, to talk about it on the first. I mean, we'll make sure everybody has the document, uh, well ahead of time. So you can look at that. And then we'll, we'll have our recommendations ahead of that as well. So when we get together, it'll just be a discussion about what's on there. Cause I think it's probably important to just go, go through that and, and just have a discussion. Cause I think a lot of the grants you see on there, it looks like it applies to us, but I think Andrea can bring some. You know, can bring some, um, some information, what, what may have worked for us in the past or why it didn't work or why we don't, uh, you know, why we're not able to apply for it. Uh, there, there, there are a lot of parameters. It, it is in the book that says. Everybody apply and everybody will be considered. There's a lot of parameters in these things. Um, and, and there's, it's, it's like anything else. With this level of, um, you know, bureaucracy built into it, there's a lot of this ands or buts. One of the things we bump into a lot is the, the percentage of our community that five zero point nine nine instead of fifty one percent. I think we had all hoped by now the, the, uh, local specific census numbers would, would be available, but it looks like we won't see local stuff until probably August and, and maybe a little bit later. So. That, that's what, that's what's blocked us out of, of some other funding. So, so we're, we're ready to talk about it. I think it's, it's good for a discussion that it'll, you know, it'll, it'll kind of educate everybody, you know, where we are and why we're doing what we're doing.
The call I was on the other day, they aren't necessarily looking for shovel ready site or projects. They're looking for, you know, ideas. Uh, it's, it's really not hard to put a grant together, you know, like let's, let's just pick something. Let's say we wanted to, you know, a bath house down at the, at the park down there, bathrooms. Okay. I mean, and anybody can put that budget together, put a grant application together. It's, you know, it's not, you know. So they're, they're very easy to do, but they're also, uh, you know. I'd like to see us do at least ten and I, I, I'm, I'm ready to allocate the money for whoever we gotta hire. If we have to, if he doesn't have it.
Let's, let's see what we come out with for a number of applications. I think it'll be a good, a good analysis for us to, to take on and everyone to see, to see what's there. I. I, I think, you know, we're also, you know, we, we are focused on the, on the big ticket item stuff. I mean, that's, that's, that's where our, you know, the priorities are for us. Demolition, cleanup of properties, that, that's been the things that we've been looking for. We now, now that we pulled the sewer pump, uh, stations, you know, off the project, now we're looking, it's, it's big money there. One point eight million dollars, seven hundred thousand. I mean, it's, it's big ticket money. So, so hopefully we have opportunities, uh, in this CFA application to get, get those things moving forward.
So Wednesday, so Tuesday. Tuesday, the first, uh, at six o'clock right here.
So, uh, the planning board meeting is that Tuesday, the first?
Of course it is. When can we incorporate the planning board?
Uh, it's just one more group of people. We gotta get up to speed on something, Counselor. I, I don't, it's not that we couldn't incorporate them, but.
Well, let's do it. Let's do Wednesday. Isn't that way they can have the meeting? If people wanna go to that, they can also.
Yeah. So do, do you know how many councils will be here? If there's not gonna be four of you, we don't need to, to be in chambers. We can use one of them.
I'm, I'm happy with Friday. If that gives you enough time.
This coming Friday?
Yeah.
No.
So is, is there any other meetings? Is there a zoning board meeting on Wednesday or?
Thursday is the third.
Could you Thursday, the third?
Okay. Time out.
Okay. Uh, six o'clock, five o'clock, seven o'clock, please?
Five is six to five.
Can we get a presentation if we're not able to make it? I'll try and log in.
Yeah, absolutely.
But can we get all the information pertinent to the meeting prior to the?
Yes.
To the meeting?
Yep.
So just for clarification, is this a call for a special meeting or is it going to be a workshop? It makes a difference on how I put notice out.
Let's do the call for a special meeting so we're covered. Uh, five o'clock, can we do five?
The third?
Three, June twenty twenty one at five PM.
I most likely won't be able to make it. Just, I will.
Okay. And this brings us to items for discussion.
I think we covered the first one enough. Uh, onto the twenty twenty one budget update. Uh, excuse me, Angelo's out of town for another week. So, uh, you've got a document that, uh, gives the update for the month. It's a couple of key highlights in there. We did receive the last eighty five thousand dollars that was withheld last year from our AIM, uh, money. So that was good news going towards our twenty twenty. I am projects. Uh, upon the closing of the new building, uh, the IDs uncollected back taxes were written off in the amount of a hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, just, just those are a couple of highlights, uh, for you to know. And I think the rest of it is just, uh, uh, the course of business. The tax bills went out, uh, five point, uh, one million dollars in the tax bills. Um, we've collected thirty five percent of the total sales tax of budget. So. We're running about fifteen percent ahead of where we were this time last year on a sales tax revenue. Just skipping down now, and this is also on our list, but it's on her report, the sales tax update. We met on video conference with the deputy commissioner a week ago, and we got provided a lot of really good information. It's the biggest advance that we've made so far on the information from last year, or the previous years, including when the last time was, they were able to supply us all the information when we were doing our own sales tax. So, that's all been helpful in putting the analysis together, and where we think we might fall next year in the first endeavor of collecting our sales tax. So, you've got the financial reports. Again, there's nothing in here. The only items that appear to be lower than the percentage you'd expect are things that were one-time shots, or things that we, you know, the money's been front-loaded. But everything else is on target, as far as the budget goes.
So, we did lose 5% of the date last year through the year, or a portion of it?
Well, it was 20. We got 15% back previously, and now this is the last 5%. And they stayed true, we said it would be a withhold, so at this point, we've gotten it all back.
Good.
You have now a property tax foreclosure, is there anything on that?
I just, going through the list, the sales tax, we just talked about. The only thing I wanted to add there was, we are planning the second meeting in June. We've got all the information. I think we've got everything we're gonna get. So, I think we'll be able to provide council with what our projection, you know, looks like for the coming year, 2022. I do want to thank the State Office of Tax and Finance. They really have come through, providing us information, and working with the county to separate the list. So, it's been a pretty significant process to weed out the numbers, because that data comes in the block format, but it's been a good process. Property tax foreclosure, continuing discussion with the county on that. They came back to us a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, and we had a discussion about an alternate to the resolution that we submitted, asking the county to take over property tax foreclosures they do for all the other towns in the county. My response back to them was, I really believe the County Board of Legislators owes this city council a response to the resolution that was passed. If you don't like what we requested that you do, you know, please vote that in the affirmative or negative, send it back to us, and if you've got an alternate plan or an alternate ID you'd like us to consider, please, please do that. So, I asked the county attorney for that today, just an affirmative. A resolution was done in February, you know, from this council, asking for that function to be merged. And I'd like to get an answer on that before we start negotiating away from it. I don't see a lot of benefits to doing something other than what we've asked for. I think having the same service provided to the city that's provided to all the other towns just makes sense. To do anything else just creates another deal, another agreement that we're gonna have to nurture over the years, and I don't think it gets us the benefit that we're looking for. So, the meeting tonight, county attorney assured me he would take it tonight and see what he could bring back. City beach update. Excuse me, we've got everything moving forward. The DPW has completed the cleanup work. At the beach, we've gotten a lot of the trees cut back, the area groomed, a lot of things dragged out of the water. I think we're right where we'd want to be at this point. The Health Department has been extremely cooperative in getting us set up to do the water sampling, the initial testing. That started today. They've cut our requirement back from one sample every eight weeks to two for four, so we can get our samples and get it done. So, we'll have the safety plans, draft safety plans, put together within the next 10 days. We're using, you know, our draft, our plan from the pool, and then comments they've given, our draft plans, they've given us from other beaches to put that together. EDR, our engineer firm that works with us on a lot of other projects, water and sewer, is assisting us with this and getting the study done of the bottom. I think that's probably the most complex thing we have to do, is to actually do the terrain evaluation, depth study that the engineer will put together for submission to the Health Department. So, as far as budgetary numbers go, we're well under the estimate that I gave you, approval of 50,000. I think we're probably more in the 25,000 to 30,000 range. I'm not, yeah, not talking about labor at this point, only because I don't yet know how we're going to run it. It's gonna be based on the number of lifeguards we have. Currently, we have about seven applications at the moment for lifeguards, so we need to increase that significantly. And most likely, we'll be sharing one set of lifeguards. So, however, whatever schedule we assign, a few days at the pool, a few days there, however we set that up once we know the number. So, but as far as startup costs for water testing, for bringing in sand, even factored in the DPW labor, just to give you, you know, the full cost of what it's costing the state to do that work, I think we're still well within that budget. We've got, we're gonna build our own lifeguard stands and benches, so our costs will be minimal on buying buoys and markers for the water. The Bridge and Port Authority stepped right up, and they've painted the outsides of the building. We've got a little bit of interior work we're gonna do with them, and then looking for a joint work effort. We're gonna get electricity restored to the building where the bathhouse will be, so we can have hot water in there. So, it's all moving along well at this point, no showstoppers to report. And I will, I'll start providing, as of next week, just a brief on where it is as we hit the benchmarks for the state.
Where are we with ADA compliance accessibility? We have way...
Yep, so we're looking at it. I mean, obviously, there's no way for us to build anything mechanical this year. But with the slopes, the way they are, we're looking at, you know, providing a path, places where people can commute wheel. There's a couple of places that we think we can, you know, we can provide the gradual slopes to get people there. Excuse me, not, it's not gonna be perfect, but we'll be able to accommodate people. I think it'll be one of those matters where we'll broadcast and ask ahead of time if there's something we can do to help, you know, assist people get in there. I think it'll be a manpower issue, so, no, I think that's how we'll advertise.
Because the pool's gonna be closed, it will be to be utilized for someone, so I just want to... Any idea on swimming pools for the summer, if we only have seven lifeguards? Do we have anybody capable of, does any extra certifications for that?
You do.
Will we be able to get an extra certification class offered here?
Excuse me, we will have one. Right now, I'm just, it's, we're trying to get bodies recruited. This is, it doesn't matter what we're recruiting this year, lifeguards, rec workers, city maintenance workers. I mean, we're having a hard time getting applications for everything. It's May, so we're getting the college kid run now, so... But, yes, we have the ability to provide all the training, it's a matter of getting the bodies now.
Are we going to pay for the training for these lifeguards?
Yeah.
So, that doesn't come out of their pocket?
Yes.
Are we advertising it that way?
Yes.
I just haven't seen that. Thanks for asking. Maybe that will entice more people to want to do it.
Does anyone else have any items for discussion?
I just have a couple. I'd like to acknowledge Melissa Baker, a new business owner and operator here, Sugar Rush Bakery. Wish her the best. You know, these small businesses are starting to pop, and hopefully, we start getting some more people investing in our community. And the other thing, I'd like to acknowledge a couple, Jerry Maxx in the audience tonight, along with some first responders, and our first responders and others that were fortunately, fortunate to be on scene last night to prevent a major catastrophe to one of our businesses, so acknowledge them.
I agree with you on that. I just wanted to congratulate also the library on their successful referendum. I think there was a great showing, and it was nice to see that they have their support that they need.
Anyone else? And this brings us to citizen participation. If you'd like to speak down in the podium, you have two minutes.
Just quickly, on your lifeguard situation, school district is offering a lifeguard course to go along with what councilor just said. As of today, there was only three kids signed up to take it. It's $100 to take the lifeguard course, and $50 to take the CPR. So, you're talking about $150 right now, from what I was told today. Community meetings, John, and your thing, I agree with the city manager. I think there should be another public hearing, and Council Kennedy. I wasn't able to get, I was at the lacrosse game the other night when you had your public hearing on it. I think, as a taxpayer, very, very good, but I'd like to see a one, three, and a five-year program. What are we gonna do in the first year? What are we gonna do in the third? What are we gonna do in the fifth year? And how much is it gonna cost us, and where we're gonna go with it? I'm not against it. I'm just, I would like to know, and I think people would like to know. Also, I wasn't here for the community center. Is there, is there a person gonna run the concession stand? Is there any renovations that we have to do to that?
No.
None? Okay, and, John, you and I ran, you were an employee of the OBPA, and I was on the board. We applied for many of them, regional economic grants. It does take time, and maybe a learning curve here for us? Maybe next year, we should start in March.
Well...
Well, this, okay, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm saying, come from our leadership here, you guys at that table. We, okay, I'm just saying, okay? I agree with you wholeheartedly, okay? There's money out there. We've applied for it before. I think we might have, you know, a little solid footing, since we've applied for previous grants, but maybe we should start this a lot earlier, and it should come from you people up here, too. All right? The Chamber of Commerce going to the community center, I support that. As a rec director, we had two terms of the Chamber of Commerce down there, and I think it's a mistake to take the recreation director's job out of the community center. I think there's enough room to house both down there, because eventually, whoever you hire as a rec director is gonna be responsible for that marina, is responsible for that pool, and is gonna be responsible for that community center. So, please think long and hard about that. A cook program and a transit, you got problems with transits, a program that we used to offer that was very, very successful for the city of Augsburg and the boat owners, is if you had a season of slip rental down there, and you were going away for a week or two or three days, you come into the direct department, and you'd say, Doug, Joe, whoever, Sue, I'm gonna be gone for four days. I'd say, can we record a slip out? You get half the profit, the city gets half the profit. Just a suggestion. It worked all very, very well. The boat owner got some money back, and the city of Augsburg got some money back, and there was additional transit boat slips available. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Steve, could we offer... Well, just in regards to Doug's comments, can we pay for that lifeguard training?
We can.
I mean, if people were aware of that, maybe we'd get more, you know, it wouldn't be as much of an upfront. So, I don't know, if we do an ad, or somehow get it out there.
Follow the school district, that would be awesome.
Yeah, and that's, and put it on like the Facebook page, I mean...
That we would cover.
Social media is how you're gonna get into contact with any of those kids that really want, that are going to do it. They're not reading the newspaper anyway, honestly.
Would it be refunded if they're an employee? I mean, we don't want to pay for everybody to get their lifeguard course, you know, if they became an employee, you know?
They can offer reimbursement, they pay it, and then we give them the money when it comes to work.
We'll take care of it.
Go ahead.
I'm Mike Tulley, 214 Hamilton Street, City. Certainly, while encouraging in pursuit of grants, this is being suggested tonight. Again, it reflects back to my comments, it's a public hearing on the plan about priorities and establishing priorities. And I'll tell you something that bothers me. When I lead that plan, and we talk about, the first section talks about economic development, job creation, and highlight that leading with the business development officer, business developer, included in the 2021 budget, yet I haven't heard any requests for information about the status of that position from anybody on council since January 1st to the city manager. I haven't heard any presentation from the manager to you about the status of that position. It was pretty important to you in the quitting position in January for the budget. It says, when financially prudent, well, you put it into 2021, I have to think it was prudent January 1st. So, it bothers me, we haven't had any discussion about where that stands. We spent a month now talking about opening a city beach. Priorities to me are out of whack in that regard. And then, just a comment about the grants. Back in November, when the police chief was making a presentation, Council Reese suggested the city might look for assistance in grant writing. Because I couldn't find an email for Council Reese, I just sent an email to the city manager and to the police chief with a suggestion for someone to reach out to a North Country grant writer who we use in the diocese. And I'm not sure if that was followed up on or not, but we've had a lot of success with this firm. And if not, and I'll re-say, and this isn't to discredit any work by city staff, particularly Hunter and the work she does in grant writing, but, you know, I think there's capable help out there if you want to, you know, pursue it and check out the possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else? If you're attending remotely, use the raise hand feature. Kathy, anyone?
The first individual is registered as David Price, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open, sir.
Good evening, council. Just a couple of points. I'd like to echo some of the sentiments of the councilors regarding the successful library vote. Was a record turnout in the library, received their funding. I think a user pay system is probably the best system. It relieves the council the burden of budgeting for that. Also, you've heard me say it out loud, my shout-out to OPD, OFD, OVRS, DPW, for their 24/7 attention to our city. Today, a special shout-out to a firefighter who was forced to retire, along with others, the names of whom I don't know, whose instincts and training helped protect lives in the business yesterday. Thank you, Jerry, at all. That was part of a letter that was edited and correspondence. I don't know why that part was deleted, but now it's been read out loud. We should be thanking these people for helping to save our business, as Council Power said, the people inside. And we want to make sure we reach out to people. As Doug Lothar said, good leadership allows openness. Good leadership rewards good acts. Certainly, laying charges against someone who just fought a fire in a business is not the way to reward good acts. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual line. It appears you are self-muted. Appears your line is open.
Yes, I just wanted to straighten up one thing on the lifeguarding and CPR that's going on out at school this week. That's just a renewal course. That's for anyone who needs to be recertified. It is not the full-blown lifeguarding course. So, that's just for the ones we've got now. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get a lifeguarding course going, and we'll be able to handle it from there. I just figured I should let you know it's a renewal, not a full-blown course.
Thank you, Penny.
Yep.
I do not see any other hands raised.
Executive session will be to discuss, we have an executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dispensal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. And I will make a motion to move to executive session.
There's two items.
Well, and the other is, there is no longer a need for a second executive session on the agenda, and we do not anticipate any action. So, I will make a motion also to adjourn after.
I need a second on your first motion, first, please.
Second, second.
Thank you.
So, the number two is no longer on the agenda?
And now the mayor's made a motion to adjourn from executive session, and I just need a second on that.
Second.
Thank you. So, I need you to call the roll to adjourn to executive session, mayor?
Yes.
Councilor Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councilor Delaba?
Yes.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.